Well.
All right, we're gonna start this, uh, the update work session at six thirty. Let us say the pledge.
Let's wait until the black packet states of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under our.
Okay. The lady.
It's gonna be interesting hearing yourself. All right, so everybody's here except for missing counselor McGuire, which I will determine later is absent. Excuse not excuse and councilor Wildpapper here. Did I say that? McGuire? Well, there we go. We have no appearance of interest to citizens, I don't think. No, thanks. Okay, get right into it. We're gonna talk about discussion, uh, discussing item will be council rules. And I'm gonna let Jeremy lead us off and then we can get into the special.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
All right, so the only place in our charter and municipal code that talks about rules for city council is. Section ten of the city charter. It just says you need to adopt the resident resolution tells you what kind of rules you wanna have. You adopted a resolution, the most recent one is included in your package. According to those rules, you're supposed to review these. Once every two years, so January and even numbered years, I believe you did that last year. However, it doesn't say that you can't review it more often than that. And with some new counselors on board and new leadership on the council, a new city manager. This is an opportune time to come back to the rules and see if there are any areas defined to them, which is why it's on the agenda for tonight. Now, to stimulate discussion, I came up with some scenarios that you'll see in your packet. As well as discussion points on those scenarios and each set of scenarios corresponds to a key section in the current rules. Yeah, this is just to stimulate discussion, get you thinking about potential gray areas. Now, I'm happy to facilitate, uh, discussion that can walk us through these. Or we can dive right into the, uh, rules that you have that you wanna start roll up your sleeves and get started. I'm, I'm happy to help however I can, but this, this is your meeting, so.
Okay, everybody, uh, sound off, dive in or?
I like the scenario thing too.
Yeah, that's pretty cool.
Yeah.
Those are pretty good. They're pretty good.
Were they helpful?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Very much so.
Okay, and was there any?
It's a more creative way to do this than to be Bravo.
Yeah. Make sure to let us cross it.
Um, so were there, in this particular public meeting section, were there? Within the scenario, any specific questions you might have? Or maybe anything that was great to you?
Um, I, I mean, it would just be nice to determine, um, what's excused and what's unexcused.
Right.
And who would we connect with? I've been mostly connecting with Rosio, but I guess I also copied you on the time that one time that I was gonna go in.
So I think, yes, ma'am.
I like the idea of double notifying. Um, if, if one message doesn't come through, the other person gets it. And since our city recorder has basically accepted the job. I like the idea that we are talking to her directly. And I know if I say anything to her, she responds right away. So if you say I'm not gonna be there, but you don't hear it, tell from her, you might wanna follow up. Make sure she heard it. And that way we know the message is getting out. Notify two people and then follow up if you haven't heard. That's one way of ensuring that your, your house will be excused.
Okay, did I add that as well? Um, one thing I love is group texts. I find them to be super efficient and so, um. You know, what they gotta propose is in a scenario is, you know, for C E O direct, but also, you know, mayor, city manager, you know, maybe even. Group text with the three, that way it's not, you know, a relayed information, it's just the information, you know, and everybody's on the same page. I love group text. I feel like it really helps with transparency. Uh, I think it's kind of a dealer's choice, you know, do whatever you feel appropriate, but personally, I, I love them. I find them to be super efficient.
I'll go ahead, ma'am. Um, what I got out of that much recent, um, ethics training from the Oregon Government Ethics Commission. In order for it to be a public meeting, we have to, the, the group text would have to discuss something that would be deliberated on and voted on. It seems to me it would be okay for us to, and it'd be helpful. For one person to know that two others can't make it that night. It might tip the scale. Well, okay, I'm not sure I could get there. Why can't we talk among ourselves when it is something like attendance?
Um, because it's easily to slip into those other discussions.
Well, yeah. Yeah, um, we can, we can hold ourselves to higher standards.
I don't, no offense to you Kitty or anybody, but we see what people say when they're gonna ha- hold themselves to higher standards. Yet, I don't actually see that happening.
Better not to invite the risk.
So, um, yeah, I, I, I would rather just Rosio and myself. If that's okay with you guys.
Yeah.
I mean, and if you can't get one of us, then absolutely, then Jeremy, but. I believe the rules say the city report, no me, it says me, just me.
You initially.
Yeah, um, and I do know this and I don't take it personally. Um, but a lot of people will get Rosio before they contact me. Um, although I did get an email today from somebody that told me they weren't gonna be here, so. Um, my next question is, what's excused and what's unexcused? If somebody, let me give you a scenario. Somebody says, hey, I'm not gonna be there. No reason why, just I'm not gonna be there. I tend to fall on the side of that's unexcused. Hmm. There's no reason, there's no rhyme, this is serious business. If you get to the position to be here, you need to be here.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I, I agree to a point. I think if it happened more than once. Then maybe it would absolutely qualify, maybe given like an excuse one time. That, you know, I, I don't have a reason, I just can't make it, but if it happens more than the one time, I could see that being an issue. Um, that's just a, a, an initial thought.
Can I add to that? Um, so, because I, I think about, like, let's say, uh, New Council has an example. That join, it joins up mid summer or something like that. Not trying to put anybody, it's just, it's a good example, it's an easy example, sorry. Okay, okay, let's say somebody who's been on council for twelve years. Who never calls out, you know, and who, who, you know, it's hit September and it's just like, I can't make it. I wonder if there's, if that's kind of like a step one of like, okay, benefit of the doubt, you know. May I inquire as to the nature of you not being able to attend, you know, personal reasons, okay, that's an excuse. I wonder if there's almost. You know, a, um, an obligation of, hey, that's not quite where I needed to be for an excuse. Can I ask why? And then, you know, if it is personal and you don't wanna talk about it, say, hey, it's a personal reason, I don't know about, but, but I'll be back to the next one. You know, I wonder if there's kind of like a, a dialogue.
I don't, you know, if there's like, for instance. You're getting a really gnarly, gnarly fight and you're still in the middle of it and you just can't leave. With your spouse or something, all you can say is, I'm not, I can't make it.
Yeah.
And then you come to me later and talk to me. I could understand that.
Yes.
Um. But. I do not appreciate nor care for. Continual absences with no call, no nothing. Or just, I'm not gonna be there. Don't do that. I'm sorry.
For the most part, this has been with notice or without. Um, it seems to me as long as you let people know before the meeting, if you're not gonna be there, there's, there has yet to be a question of why. Although I can go along with this because. When you apply, you know, when you apply for the, to, to run. You should be committing yourself to come to the meeting, but then again, we had one counselor who was. Notorious for not being there and not calling in in advance, but it's kind of, can we afford to let that one go?
Yes, yes, we can. Okay, that's my personal thing.
Well, that's, that, it's good to talk about that because this is kind of how it's been going in the past. Um, nobody wants to say anything about the one.
The problem with that is then you have to get into other things which can, which can cause more disruption to your council. Than just. So there's the thing. How do we instill in people when they come on board? How very important it is that we'll be here and participate.
Especially when you can attend on it.
Yeah.
Well, there you go, you know, I'm still here.
Today's their agenda.
And as somebody new. Uh, and appointed, not elected, um, and I've, I've read it twice, actually. Um, some of it still hasn't fully stuck, uh, interpretations. Is there a specific limit?
See, it's not written in there like that either. And again, we have, yes, there's things that we can do, but. Then you have to weigh all these things and determine, and so many counselors have to determine, you know, but you get the whole damn council involved. With the things that are involved, so what can we do creatively? To help encourage those. Partners, maybe not attending and calling or whatever.
Not calling in advance, we definitely call up people. An excused absence is, that is a violation of the rules. Um. Unfortunately, what we have had in the past, and this is gonna take some mindset changes. We're afraid who might come into villain boy to put somebody off who's basically just not here. So we need to, you know, we need to be aware that we might be opening up to, um. Well. I don't wanna put it that way, I'm just saying this, uh, this is the impression I've gotten from the past. Uh, we don't want to kick somebody off because there are no quantity and who knows what, whom we, whom we might get later.
Yeah, I don't think we can really kick somebody off. We can, you know, pressure them to resign.
There is, there is a clause in there. There is that censorship or, um. A level of concern.
A level of concern, but it doesn't make them have to resign.
No, like if maybe, maybe we just make it clear that we're, as a council, we're not happy.
Yeah.
Um. But yes, we are getting into some slightly new territory, I think.
You know, like forty years in the public schools attendance was a conversation that we got a lot. And, um. What my, my experience, and including, you know, just me and my classroom, what are my rules, what are our school rules, what are, you know, terms of attendance? You know, just being a wall is not okay. Um, so we, we all agree on that. Yeah. Um, the level of excuse, I mean, I think there needs to be some grace. And I think all of us are graceful people, so I think that, you know, when something happens, we get it. But it's also very, very helpful to have, you know. After this many absences, we have a problem learning to discuss everything about it. Um, because in my case, kids knew what, what the line was and then that kicked you into the next, whatever it is disciplinary situation. And so I, I, from my experience, it, you know, it, it feels like it's kind of nice to have a line, you know? That is, uh, that once you've crossed it, then we, we discuss who, where there's the next step.
Yeah, so, so I, I like the idea, what, what I like to do at work is, you know, you start by having a verbal. You know, conversation, how are you gonna word it? And then if the conduct continues, then you move to a, kind of to your point done. Um, so that too, so you like, if we wanna put up numbers that I think like, but two unexcused absences, there's a one on one with the mayor. Um, or, well, and anything like that, you might wanna have a, a, a third party in the room, so maybe city manager as well. Um, and then, um, after the second, if it continues, then we enact, we, we build in a written referendum, you know. Policy that's, you know, hey, this is, this is unexcused, this is not able to continue. You know, if it does continue, then we reserve the right to enact this, to, to go through a central process. So, I mean, is, I don't know if that's. What is, what do we think about something like that?
I think we need to be more formal, yeah.
Do you know, I came up with one concern that wasn't here. Um, it actually happened to a former counselor. Gathering stuff, uh, on the way to the car when a child had an accident. Instead of being here, they were at the, the emergency room or urgent care. It wasn't excused because it wasn't called in early, but that seems like an excusable thing.
Absolutely.
That could, you know, we could make exceptions in those.
Of course, that makes common sense.
Sure, sure, right.
Mostly my concern is, is. People not letting me know or people just saying, I ain't gonna be there. Well, if you're not gonna be here, don't be here then.
Well, yeah.
Plain and simple.
In cases of emergencies, the mayor may find a twenty four hour grace period be appropriate.
Oh, there you go, absolutely, absolutely.
And we're grownups, we can figure that.
Yeah.
But we should, I think, get some of this on paper for sure. We wanna write down like the specifics of some of this today, or we wanna go broad and kind of let you guys work on this.
I don't.
I'd like to have a general idea so we can, uh, come up with some graph language for you at a later meeting.
I, I would propose after two unexcused absences, a one on one with the mayor and city manager. After a third unexcused absence within, what do we wanna say? Within six months of, you know, the, um, verbal reprimand one on one meeting. Then a written, um, letter of reprimand is to be issued, um, and signed by. The mayor, the city manager and the counselor it is applicable to. Um, and if further unexcused absences continue after the third, the council reserves the right to open an investigation. Per the censor process, censure process. What do we think?
Yep, I like that.
Something like that.
And is two unexcused too little or too much?
I think two shows a habit.
Then the six month period, I think that.
Yeah.
I think giving notice before, before the meeting is the key part.
Yeah.
One thing we don't have in writing is specifying how attendance is taken. Um, here in person, here zoom, um, virtually. Um, excused absence and unexcused absence, if you use all four of those words, they're on the record. And then she can put those in the meeting, um. The with notice and without is one of the key pieces we have here. Um, and if we put it in, if we put it in writing exactly how the minutes are gonna look. Then we can focus on, we had an unexcused absence again last. Meeting from councilor.
Well, I don't, I don't want this to be something everybody looks at, oh, how many times were they absent? Because not all the counselors are gonna know why other counselors are absent sometimes.
Yeah.
Nor are you gonna necessarily know the reasons why they're absent because of personal privacy.
Par, parentheses, excuses.
So.
Excuse, yeah.
I. Want to emphasize, I don't want this used as a tool to pick at a person or persons, period.
Agreed.
So just, I mean, excused, unexcused, and we'll get with that for now.
Can we put a clause in there that if we do find that that is being used as a weaponization against other council members, the mayor reserves the right. To remove that language from the minutes. So there's a clause in there of, if we find it, it's an issue, then it can be removed per the mayor's discretion. Um, that may accomplish this.
I don't wanna do that either, and the reason I don't wanna do that is you might get a shitty ass, sorry, world. Um, a, a crappy, um. Mayor who might. Use that as a weaponization.
That's a fair point. No, that's a good point. I take it back.
Yeah, it's really hard to come up with a policy that, you know, is fair and yet firm, so.
So, so a question for you, how is unexcused and excused defined?
Yeah, that's the question. How is it defined? Is it up to me and my discretion, or do we wanna put a label on that? Because some scenarios might pop up that don't fit either one.
If you had. Somebody that used. My dog ate my homework, let's just say, multiple times. Will that qualify?
No. And I, I mean, unless they've got proof that their dog is eating their homework that damn much.
Right.
Yeah.
So the same excuse, my point is the same excuse over and over again.
It is not excuse and, and the.
Or adonis.
Yeah, the, and the reason that is, is because once that happens two or three times. It is up to you to use your damn brain and figure out how to have that not happen in the first place.
Right.
And if there's an issue, come and talk to me.
Yeah.
Don't just not show up or don't call, come and talk to me, thanks.
I think I would, oh, go ahead, can you read it again?
This is the key, just notify us in advance so we know there's gonna be a quorum or not.
Yeah, like why?
Are we getting rid of judgments too much?
Are we what?
Getting rid of judgments too much about why they can't make it to nothing, you know?
Um, well, see, that's the thing, and what's excused and what's unexcused, and that's why I'm saying, how is it up? Previously, it's been up to the mayor's discretion. So, we can leave it like that. Most of the mayors in the past have never misused it that I'm aware of.
So, so if I may, if, if a notice is the issue here, and you don't wanna delve too much into the personal, then you could have something like. Anything, i- if, if you provide at least twenty four hours notice, unless it's an emergency. That would generally be excused. If the notice is the deciding criterion, that might be one way we can look at it.
Yeah, I think broad is probably good because to your point of, you know, risk of future. Um, mayorships, you know, you don't want to be a weaponized tool.
Can I ask a procedural thing? Uh, so if it's, Mark doesn't unexcuse in the minutes. But then you, you, you reached the person reaches you knew that it was actually, it would be correct and be correct.
Yeah, and it would be amended in the following minutes, I assume, like when we analyze the minutes.
Yeah.
It has amended.
Okay, I've got it.
Um, if there was something out of your, like a, like a trip to the urgent care center. Um, you have twenty four hours to contact the mayor, say, hey, I'm sorry I missed it, but I'm just finally getting a moment to breathe. Um, could we? Could we say twenty four hours before and twenty four hours after the meeting is of an excusable time period?
In case of emergency.
Yeah, in case of emergency, if you let us know something came up within twenty four hours. We would have a set time period. Excused absences are within twenty four hours before the meeting with exceptions up to twenty four hours afterwards.
Hopefully.
Um. There's something concrete we can put in writing.
Is there something right around that, Jerry?
Yeah, if we're, if we're, th- that's easy. If, if the criterion is just twenty four hours before or after and. Uh, to provide notice, that's generally gonna be excused, we could, that's just a couple of sentences, we could definitely do that. Is that what I'm hearing?
For emergencies, twenty four hours before and after, standard excuse will, more than twenty four hours, that's right, what you're wanting? What?
Okay, um, I could tell you, um, I'm not gonna be here at the July meeting.
Yeah, you know.
That's, that's excuse, um. But at least twenty four hours before the meeting, if you have it already, seems to be a good idea.
For a standard and then.
Yeah, but sometimes, for instance. Um, and this has happened to me a couple of occasions. You either get food poisoning.
Yeah.
And it hits you when you get home, you know, like that, or. Um, or, or something to that nature. I mean, you really can't.
Oh, that's right.
So I guess that just goes under whatever.
Your fault.
Well, I cannot for a personal, um, example. I was putting my jacket on stiff wrong and wound up on the floor. I wasn't able to get to that particular meeting and I was only able to call and say ten minutes early. Um, I think that would be a so meeting that's still, things like that can happen. So, you know, but. Letting people know so that people not come down here and not have a forum, that would, that seems to be the primary issue.
Okay, well, we'll move on then now to the agenda setting process, section four. Anybody have questions or comments, concerns about those?
Notify Rosio and you, and, yeah, I like that. And Rosio, would you remind us of the timeframe? You sent an email out recently. If we wanna put something on the agenda.
So it's gonna be about two weeks before.
Two weeks.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, cool.
So I'll be.
Can that, is that in our rules somewhere? Can, can we add that, please?
There's actually another. Method I thought I learned.
There's not an agenda deadline, if that's what you're looking for.
Yeah.
Cool, so the discussion points, except you're able to add an action item to the agenda during the meeting, it seems like.
You mean the first one, is it ever appropriate?
Yeah.
If, it can be appropriate, you can do that at work sessions.
Work, at work session.
You, you can.
And you can reorder the agenda.
You can add a discussion item during a meeting, but a voting item likely not.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, that sounds right.
And if we don't see a lot, I don't wanna spend.
That's right.
Yeah.
I just, I just.
Sorry, I, I, I'm not gonna stay on something if we don't need to, sorry, sorry.
The nice thing, ma'am, sorry.
Yes.
The, the nice thing is I, I, I. The nice thing, may I, sorry, the, the nice thing is I, I, I find that these sections are pretty well thought out in, in, in general. And there's always gonna be questions of like a, this very specific situation, what do we do in this moment? And in those moments, we can ask Jeremy, we can ask mayor, you know, there's. If, if, if we need clarification, you can always ask for it, but we don't wanna get like in the weeds on something.
No, I don't wanna get in the weeds, unless some of it's a little personal for some people, they don't wanna be telling me every little thing, I don't want them to.
Yeah, so.
I just want them to give me the basic.
Yeah, so.
You know.
So folks, did you wanna formalize an agenda deadline process, or is it okay just to go with what Rosio said out to all of y'all?
I like that.
All right, communicating with staff, section ten on page six.
Counsel Department conduct.
Oh, did I skip a page? Thank you. Probably because I cuss. Um, okay, counsel decorum and conduct. Which is not always me, I apologize, everybody. Uh, well, what comes out of my mouth, I should say. That works. But. Yeah, I didn't, I didn't necessarily either.
You were pretty straightforward.
Pretty welcome.
Okay.
Can I guess? The only question I had, have we had issues with this?
Yes.
We have.
Bad.
Okay.
Issues. And. So. Let me just say. Now, you counselors can go into all, anybody in their department and say, you're gonna give me this, you're gonna do this, you're gonna do that, da, 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 da. Yeah. So don't do that.
You know, the, the eight-hour training that I took. My main takeaway from it was, don't ever say to any staff, you know who I am. Don't ever say, that was the main takeaway for eight hours.
And they do, do that, and we're not the only city in the city, this is how, this is you. Although, everybody thinks they get this little title and. And it's, you're working with people, you're a team, come on.
Well, of course, there's a, do you know who I am? I am suggesting we use that in the, uh, in the newsletter. Do you know who I am? Not that, do you know who I am, don't you even think about doing that?
Within the last two years, yes.
You jump when I say jump.
Yeah, do not go tell staff what they can do or don't do or whatever. If you have a question, oh, I'm sorry, Kitty.
No, no, I'm sorry.
Please go to Jeremy first.
I found words in our council rules. It's like. Except in. Goodness. Well, all right, if we go through the minute, the minutes. It, it made it sound like there were times when we could tell the city what to do.
I went, no.
Indirectly, we do, we, we set the policy, but the everyday stuff, they do.
Set policy and they're the legs that make it.
But then we talk to him and her and we don't talk to them directly.
We can talk to them, there's a difference between talking to them. And telling them what they can and can't do, or. Offering them jobs or firing them or anything like that.
Talking versus passing.
Exactly.
But talking, talking can sometimes be applied as telling.
Yeah, it can be a slippery slope.
So like this scenario one on section ten.
Jeremy was waiting, like, I'm ready.
How slippery is it? City Hall and casually asks the planning director, hey. I heard from a constituent that their permit application is delayed, can you look into it and make sure it gets approved? And soon. It's none of your business.
Hiring?
No, plain and simple. That is none of your business.
Yeah. Yeah, that was a new viewpoint, so you didn't.
If there were policy that we got as a concern from a conversation with the constituent. Then we would, you know, would, you know, discuss and say, how, how is this permitting or whatever.
Yeah, we would talk to Jeremy, is what we would do, and then Jeremy would. Do his staffing and. Do whatever needs to be done between us to bring the two together, but we don't do that to staff. At all. So. No question. All right. Bias in decision-making process, process, section thirteen. You have questions or concerns or thoughts on this?
Oh, I actually have something for section ten, very, very simple, basic, but there was just a tab error on. Ten point one B, it just used to be tabbed over once for us after, it's just a formatting thing. It, it wasn't anything content related, I just wanted to bring it up for the purpose of. Um, and then there was another one I noted that I can refer to. Uh, oh, yeah, it was eight point two, um, just had one, two minutes tabs. Representative. That was it, that's all I got, great.
Good job, Goopie there.
I, I run markets for a while, so it's like, I, I have to look at formatting.
Yeah, instead of, for when you read and read and read and read over and over, you're like, I. I see that, and then I gotta go take it to somebody else at the door.
Cool.
All right. Bias in decision-making process, any. Comments, questions, or concerns?
I would kinda like to discuss a little bit, how do counselors handle site visits to maintain transparency, when. When we're at an event. We need, can I attend as Robin Peterson, or do I need to, it's a city event, do I need to? Attend as.
Are you talking about a city-county dinner?
Yeah, I guess so.
If you're at a city-county dinner, you're attending as a council with the rest of the.
And then what about like, uh, some event that's happening in town, I can't even, Friday night.
You're attending as.
Robin, okay, that's what I assumed, I just wanted to confirm.
Yeah, unless there's some other special occasion, like when we did the, um, thing for Sweeney. Um, during Friday nights, then that just means we all come out with our tags. Yeah, and then when we're done with that. Take that off, then back to your, yours.
Oh, you know, okay, I saw a counselor wearing her name tag at Friday night. Is that okay to identify yourselves that, yeah, we're part of the council, or?
I mean.
Should we not do that?
The only reason I hesitate for you to do that is because people will come up to you, start asking you questions. That really are a council discussion and not a city counselor discussion.
I'll have to watch for that if it happens again.
There's my concern with that, yeah. Cause that again, it could be a slippery slope.
Well, there was that talk about if you're wearing your name tag, it gives the perception that you're speaking for the city.
It does. That's why people will walk up to you and say, hey, I wanna tell you about blah, 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 and why aren't you doing blah, blah, blah?
Here's another question. Uh, even if you're not wearing your tag, but you are recognizable by the community, how does that differ?
It differs because you're answering as Chris and not. What your buddy says.
Okay.
It, it's different.
It is kinda tricky.
Uh, got something in, um, thirteen point one.
What was that?
Thirteen point one point one, there needs to be a space.
Oh, damn. He can't help himself. Jeremy's like.
Don't even start on bolds and not bolds, I'm not gonna touch, I'm not gonna touch. Thirteen point one point one.
Yeah.
Oh.
Just basically, I gotta tell you, when I first started looking at the packet. I pulled out my old. My old folder. Not even thinking the. The rules had been updated, so I got away, I was like. Oh, you know what, I started looking, I'm like, oh, some of it's in here, maybe, and I went, oh my God, I read it, a whole section that changed. But then there was something about the old section that I kinda liked better than the new section, but. It, it was just about the whole change with how we can do meetings, um, electronically and all the stuff, and so.
Oh, yeah, that's so.
I do have one final thing, and I think it kind of leads in to the one that we're talking about, the next one. Is coming from the private sector. One of the things in, in the supervisory roles. That was just burned into my brain from my supervisors over the years is. When you're at work, represent work, and once you get into that supervisory role. Even when you're not at work, you still represent work, so how does that lay in for us?
It does, because people know who you are, and if you act fool. Are you gonna get reelected?
It's not necessarily about the rule.
Um, is, are you, if you're gonna go around and say a bunch of mean stuff about half of this side of the community, but you're all frenzy frenzy with this side. Are you gonna get reelected?
Right, okay.
It's that plain and simple, really. You act. And treat people the way you would expect them to do for you if they were in this position. Period. So if you expect. You know, true, honest answers without giving them a bunch of BS and saying, this is how I personally feel versus. We haven't talked about this with the council, so I can't speak to that, but I can tell you how I feel about it. Plain and simple.
I, um, I have another question about that, um, until someone says to me. That they're upset about this zoning decision or whatever. Um, what is my best advice today to? How, how can I help them without?
You, do you know what I mean? Yeah, yeah, so if it has to do with planning or something like that. Then you're gonna want to refer them to city hall and either have them talk to Jeremy. Yeah, or just refer them directly to Jeremy, and then Jeremy can take care of it from on this end. That's what he's here for. Otherwise, you know, you can send them to the planning department.
Yeah.
If they have specific questions about that. And face-to-face, email, I mean, just start with an email or?
You can give them my phone number, my email address, they can come down and talk to me personally. I would echo the, the mayor's advice there, I'm here to, to answer questions and. And serve the citizens, and if I don't know the answer, I can find out and direct them to the appropriate place. Especially with, uh, planning and land use issues. We wanna ensure we're responding timely because there, there are hearings that are scheduled, and we wanna ensure that folks have a. A chance to be engaged in that process, because if you don't show up at the hearing, then that window closes.
Yes.
And you, you can also, um, if you know the hearing dates. Uh, educate them on that or direct them to the city website, encourage them to show up.
Yeah. I love to keep telling people, you don't love we guys. You don't love we guys. You can love your phone anytime for anything. Sorry, I love it, because I have picked it up a few times and went, oh. So, that app is amazing, and people use their phones like nobody's business these days, so. I would push it, push it, push it, okay, stop. May I have that too much coffee?
Can I make a quick amendment to the. To the attendance one, cause I just saw it on the resolution, uh, for twenty-four. I would, I would voice that. That excuse unexcused is only for the purpose of the minutes and doesn't make its way to any resolutions, so like there's absent. Um, you know, there's in favor, opposed, absent, abstained for this resolution, I don't think any of that excuse unexcusing that should be. Reflected in the resolutions, it should only be in the minutes. Because that's a good enough tracking method, and we don't need to see thi- this counselor from four years ago. Was in an unexcused absence when I voted for this, it's just that I.
Right, they're absent.
Yeah.
But we don't identify excuses for.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I, I would want, I would vocalize that preference.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Uh, cool, that's all I got.
All right. So anything else with the bias decision-making process? And into the committees, organization, and media? I would never say that. I would just say the council voted in favor, I would never say. So many voted against and so many voted this, unless specifically asked, then the reason, I would not do that. As you're. Immediately setting people up to go.
They're looking on this area. Yeah, it's like, okay, guys, sorry.
Yeah, I would never say that, when I read it, I went, ugh, I did, I wrote it right there, I would not say that. I don't even like. Uh, yeah, I would never say it that way, but anyways. I might drop on the cap one. Any questions about that? Media stuff, I mean, not that we get media here all the time, but they might surprise us on that.
I have a question, actually.
Okay.
So, um, it's with regard to the seventeen point three council liaison, so good example, so Council Tackrow is the liaison to the events committee. And I was seeing about this the other day, I, I keep needing to go to meetings and I keep missing them unfortunately. Um, but when, cause I just noticed it's not in here. Is the, is the liaison, is part of their responsibility to then report anything to the council? So then, should that be in here, because I would love to hear like summaries, things like that, I mean, I know I can, you know.
It doesn't seem there, it's liaison, it's that.
No, that sounds great, um, I just wasn't sure, you know, should the relaying of information go up in like council comments, concerns, you know, like the first one?
That's usually.
Cool, that sounds great, yeah, perfect.
And they don't have to report every meeting, just generally when there's. Stuff to not really report.
Meaning insignificant is kinda how I've been.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't wanna know, well, so-and-so came to the meeting and so-and-so didn't, and so-and-so agreed to that, and so.
For sure, no, that sounds great, I just wasn't sure, cause it was ambiguity is fine, since that it's like understood that it's like, hey, it opens up when it comes up, but. I just had noticed it wasn't.
Yeah, like, if we know an event is coming like, sacred five.
Yeah.
We can simply say, hey, Chris, how about say?
Love it.
Plain and simple.
Yeah.
All right, well, that wasn't too damn painful.
Yes, I went through the, the rules themselves, and I have a couple of questions I'd like to talk about.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, starting with three point one. This, um. A quorum, four council members shall constitute a quorum. It doesn't say specifically that we have a seven-person council?
We don't.
Does it need to, I mean, does it? Can we change the number, has it ever been different, is it just assumed four, and do we have a total of seven?
It says it someplace in our.
Maybe in the charter?
Yeah, it does say it's obvious, um, that it's a council of seven, run by a blah, 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 it says all that.
Yeah, so what we have in the council rules here is quorum is for, and it doesn't say why. We know it, we know why.
Well, I would hope that when you're a city counselor, you know, get elected or become one, you probably. At least I was, I'm a nerd though, I'm like, ooh. Ooh, the website. And I'm trying to suck in as much information as possible.
The way that I view this is it's like cheat sheet, you know, and so the cheat sheet doesn't necessarily, you know, give all the information, but it can reference the charter, which we'll have on there.
Yeah, and we don't wanna repeat the repeat, repeat in every. Different article that we have, because it would be this big. So.
Just thought I'd check.
No, please.
Um, yeah.
There's another one, three point seven. Meetings by telephone. Do we really need that anymore because we?
We do need that still.
That's what they call it.
We still need that, because some people can't Zoom or be on the thing, but they can call in.
Okay.
We do still need that.
Do we need that on Zoom on there?
No, Zoom is just a, a brand name. Zoom is just a a brand name.
Yeah.
That's fair.
It's kind of. Bunchy with the telephone.
There's another one, six point four.
Public comment? Yeah, um.
May. If necessary, the council may limit comments to three minutes. We have officially decided that it is. Unless we specify otherwise, it is three minutes. Do we need to adjust the wording in the council rules? To establish that, yes, we have decided that. Public comment is three minutes. Unless we. Officially declare something otherwise.
It already says it, the council may limit comments to three minutes. The reason. Oh, okay. There's a reason behind that and we may want to limit. But if we only have two people here, we're gonna allow them longer than three minutes.
It seems like we've been doing the three minute clock. Maybe I missed something or.
She turns it on, but we never tell anybody to shut up.
Yeah.
Okay.
When it goes off.
Okay.
And then ten point one. This is um. Ten point one. Oh, yeah. Um, be. Accepting council meetings, not attempting to influence a city employee. We're not supposed to in- influence a city employee anyway, even if it isn't a meeting.
I don't, it probably should be reworded different because I don't think we're trying to influence necessary. Other than. Maybe Dawn is in here and he's suggesting ABC to fix whatever, okay? But there's another way to fix ABC and, you know, counselor Joe thinks. Dawn should use that method instead of the way Dawn is going to do his method. Maybe that's what they mean that we can discuss, but to me.
When it's in front of everybody.
Right. That it can become a a discussion topic then. That's the only way I would view that. Otherwise, there's really no way to influence. I don't like that word. I mean, we're not gonna stand up here and go, Don. You better do this.
I wonder the way that it kind of that example, I think is there's this um. You know, like, hey, Don, there's, you know, I. You should do DEF versus, hey, if it says a heads up, there's also this option that's DEF, do that what you will. You know, sharing information versus directly, but that the other day, I think it's also kinda gives clues.
B and E are the same thing. It just seems like they can be confused.
Yeah, yeah, influence is an interesting choice of word.
Yeah.
Um, I've brought up a couple of things with the minds. Yeah, suggestions on, hey, this might work.
Well, I'm not telling you what.
I think it. Might mean that it's more. Directing as to accept this contract.
Or award this. Wording the contracts and stuff.
Gotcha.
Well, we don't, we don't even necessarily do that. I mean, you guys bring the contracts in, you show us. And usually there's one to three to choose from. And if there's only one, there's only one.
Depends, yeah, on what we do.
So.
It's weirdly worded.
I think this could be worded better because the way. You can, the way it's written is in a council meeting, you could attempt to influence somebody. To award a certain contract to somebody. That's the way it's, that's the way of saying that.
But I don't think that's the way it's meant.
That's not the way it's.
But I don't want that kind of power.
So we might wanna rethink how that one is worded because I think it's more supposed to be about discussion than telling. You know what I mean?
I can take a stab at that and reword it more in line with the spirit of what it's trying to communicate.
Yeah, thank you, thank you.
And I have one more when it comes to wording. Oh, oh, it's um, five point two. I'm gonna go back to five. Um, app. Public comment. Um, it has to do with the mayor asking for a consensus from the audience. You can ask the the audience to rise and be counted. As if you have to stand up in order to be counted. A little bit of wording that needs to be redone.
Oh, uh, to expedite hearings, the presiding officer may call for those in favor and those in opposition to rise.
Yeah.
And the city recorder shall note the numbers of such persons for the record.
Little bit of wording.
In other words, when we had the Mike's Bar fiasco.
You could have chosen.
Yeah, who was opposed to the dancers at the bar and who's okay with the dancers at the bar? Let's be good risen and the five of us that have. Long story.
But making people stand up to be counted is just not right.
No, I don't, yeah, I mean, it could be reworded.
It's wording, you know, the. I have been through a whole bunch of different things where just little words are changed here and there to be more. Inclusive. So.
Yeah, but that that. I mean. I suppose that could have been done, but then nobody would have been able to get up there. We used to have it as a bar done way. And they had, um, they were gonna be hosting a private party with some. Dancers, exotic dancers. Oh, my gosh, the whole frickin' town of Dayton was down here.
They're going to turn it into a strip club and it's gonna draw everybody and the whole town is gonna turn into a strip club.
And I'm like, can we get this reception? Do we have the budget?
We came close. Um, when we had a rather maybe water increase.
That was the only time.
But, you know. Yeah, it was packed.
Alright, so do we have anything else? You guys have anything else?
One more. The timing of corrections to the minutes. According to the rules, we're supposed to, if we see a typo or something needs to be corrected. We're supposed to tell her ahead of time so she can, we can have an. Yeah, I don't think anybody does that in advance.
I've done it once, maybe twice.
I've had some emails or texts sometimes.
Which way do you prefer it?
Yeah, I think that's the question.
If you email me and let me know, I'm gonna fix it.
Should be like two days in, well, um.
You don't know. Someone might read their packet.
And then. And then do we have to still say, uh, approve the minutes as amended? I mean, that still needs to, so you still need to say.
Because when she reprints it, you're gonna, you're gonna see what was fixed. Cuz it's a matter of part of the record, so. At least that's what they used to do. Anyways, okay. Any more discussion, comments, questions, concerns?
So just that I sit on clear when I bring a updated draft to you, the only thing I'm seeing is. Uh, the language round excused. Absences in the twenty four hour notice period. And rewording section ten point one, the.
I think that's. All of that, wow.
Love it.
Alright, um, page twenty seven. There is a discussion Jeremy was wanting to bring before us for a. Water town hall to help the people.
I think it would be wise to engage the community on this issue. I've received some questions and concerns from community members. I'm sure that you have. I know there have been comments on social media platforms about water in the city. I believe it would be advantageous to be proactive about this and to have a meeting where we can share updates with the community. As well as answer any questions regarding our water quality, regarding our water supply and what we're doing to. Sure, we have an adequate supply. Your retreat is next week and following that. I anticipate we'll have some discussions on these issues and have some ideas firmed up. Which we can then communicate to the public. For that reason, I believe in April timeframe is the big opportunity. Uh, for us to have these conversations and I'll also be having more dis- discussions with. Lafayette and McMinnville Waterline too, so hopefully I have more information shared on those topics. So for tonight, I just wanna gauge your interest in that and if so. Select tentative. Dates and I'll confirm with other members of the team, public works, city engineer, see, see if any of those options work for them.
I propose about Thursday. Those, those are, I think that's a good. You know, a lot of times evenings are a little more at the beginning of the week and at the very end of the week, Thursdays on average seem to be. Relatively open with just a lot of the folks that I chat with. You know, that could be a good option, I think. Remind me if I'm wrong, but wasn't the transportation. Uh, presentation on a Thursday?
It was.
Yeah, yeah.
And the housing one was a Wednesday, I think. It also had good attendance. Um, okay, we're gonna move on to council comments and concerns and.
Mayor, do we wanna select a possible date and time?
Do we wanna do it now or do you wanna send it out to people?
I'm I'm asking the council.
What about the twenty fourth Thursday?
I'm open.
That's a. The twenty fourth of March or April?
I could do any Thursday than April.
Um, I won't be here.
You won't be on the twenty fourth?
Have it the tenth.
Seventeen?
Seventeenth is Monday, Thursday.
Is what?
That's the holy week, Easter.
Oh.
Some churches could well believe certainly San, San Martin will be.
Oh, yeah.
Yep, good point, good point. Uh, maybe Wednesday, the guy?
How quickly do you wanna do it after retreat?
I would say earlier than the week of the seventh.
Sixteenth would work.
Sixteenth is good for me. The sixteen.
Give me another option, just in case.
Twenty third. No, you're gonna be at a.
I'm gone the whole week.
On the whole week, okay.
Well, nine, I guess.
What about the thirtieth?
It's April thirtieth.
That's also the date and events committee.
Actually, that is. I might not be here. I think that's um, the LOC conference members. Be going the day before.
How about the alternate is the eleventh?
Friday, the eleventh.
I know they won't.
People are gonna be busy cuz the next day is pass over. April's a bad month because there's a lot of holy holidays that time.
See, we have the sixteenth, guys.
What about the?
We said nine.
Did we say nine?
What about the third?
Uh, didn't Jeremy just want to go for the seventh, yeah. I can do the ninth.
I can do the ninth.
Sixteen as first choice and the ninth as second choice.
Perfect.
Okay.
Love that for us.
Did we um, decide to do the the open house for the footbridge on the twenty second? And it mentioned that Earth Day thing. Dave is. Kinda aiming for that or?
Yes.
Okay.
Which month?
April twenty second.
About Earth Day, yeah. Well, the footbridge dedication.
Big birthday. Anyway. Uh, so sixteenth as a primary, ninth as the open.
Okay. Excellent. Alright, we're gonna stubborn council comments and concerns. You got anything for us?
The man.
So I got a couple things, uh, the sync of the mile, just an update. Um, there has been some progress. Uh, we're, uh, we've reached out to a bunch of the food vendors, the church across the street. Um, they're working on it. Uh, we've got the flyers in process. We should have those this week. Um, as well as uh, the parade registration. Uh, it worked. Um, and I think we've got right now. Ten or eleven floats for the parade already secured, so we're just waiting on the the registration forms. Um. Uh, so that's sync of the mile. We've, we've got a little bit more organization stuff to do at our next meeting, but we'll hammer that out. The other main item was the Dayton Danger Trail. Uh, there's been a lot of traction on it. Um, last Thursday, um, we met again with the. The ladies from the Dayton Y Run, uh, Carol Walsh and Savannah Schmaltz. I believe it's how I pronounce her name. Um, along with Mitch Coleman, uh, we did uh, get a contact for a local arborist. Um, he's not left yet. He was excited to show up and participate. So we were kind of walk the trail, identify some danger sites. Um, there was um, another gentleman there from the community, uh, Jeremy. Um, I believe his last name was Jeremy. He was there as well. So, um, we had, we had quite a group, um, this last Thursday to kind of walk through, identify some spots. Um, and then just start drawing up a plan. Um, we had a meeting the prior Thursday as well, um, with a few less people, but that was our initial one. So there's been some uh, some progress there. Um, there's a local church that I've spoken with, the the Christian church and school over there. Uh, they expressed some interest. Um, this school uh, is aware of everything. Amy Pass was supposed to be there. She had some emergency stuff that popped up. So she wasn't able to attend, but they're fully aware. Um, and also a special note, the um, women from Y Run, Dayton Y Run. Uh, Cheryl and Savannah, they are also, they work at the grade school. So. The grade school isn't falling.
What is great? What is your next meeting?
Uh, we have not set one up. I absolutely will. Yeah.
May I have an invite too, please?
Of course.
We may need to notice.
How many people go cuz if you all go at the same time, it becomes a public meeting.
We'll take turns.
I'll make sure.
Take turns.
Council techers invested a lot of time.
We can have three but not four, is that correct? Yeah.
Even then, you gotta be careful of not talking to. So it just gets really tricky.
Okay. It's almost easier to just do a public notice. Um, seems like we're showing a lot of that.
I mean, I guess if you know well in advance, because you have to know in advance to do that notice.
Yeah.
We, we, we would if you let us all know.
Yeah.
Well, we'll see what uh, what we come up with for the next day that we all meet out there. Um, and once we do, I'll give at least a week's notice. Is that?
Cool.
Plenty of time to reach out and then to notify.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
As a counterpoint, I'm also really comfortable with letting Council Tech Crew take point on this for a little while. Um, and then.
Yeah.
She's gonna fill us in cuz he's getting a lot of good work done.
Yeah, I agree as well. I don't wanna get in the way.
Yeah, same, same, you know, so there's something for us to think about too.
Yeah, I mean. We don't believe in a lot of cheap. We definitely need a lot of chiefs.
Cooks in the kitchen.
Okay, you got anything more for us?
Well, I can tell you, um, you're going to have a clown in the Cinco de Mayo parades. And I believe I'm going to have three younger ones with me.
On my festival.
Yes. Um, two of them with very strong connections to Dayton. And a third one who is a friend of theirs. So if this goes well, they're going to be joining me at the junior parade at part of the Portland Rose Festival. Also, um, also on Thursday, April third. The Red Cross is going to be down at Fire Hall collecting blood from one until six. They come out the first Thursday of January, April, July and October.
Yes.
They've been doing that since two thousand and seven. And Dayton is the only one in this area who has had a blood drive hosted by a clown.
What time is the?
All day.
All day.
Um, there is a neat little blood donor app available. No, I don't know, maybe on, maybe on iPhones. I like it.
It sucks. It never pulls up Dayton.
Well, you.
Ever. Oh, you have. When Dayton is hosting, it does not pull up.
No, you have to go into the calendar and refine the date and give it a very specific date.
I have done that. It does not pull up Dayton. So I deleted the day app.
Yeah, maybe reinstall it. I don't know, maybe the iPhone app doesn't work as well, because.
It's not.
Anyway. Um. I don't think you're available during the right times for it, but if you are, you know, you can always try and always walk in. They might take it. But yeah, we've been doing this since two thousand and seven. So, um. I think that's about it for tonight.
I do have one last question.
Yes, sir.
Um, May second, the grade school is having a carnival.
May day.
Yeah.
Oh, sure.
So if any of us attend or.
You've used to do that.
Oh, yeah, I used to hand out books, but that is, May second is the LOC conference. I will be in North Bend.
I'm not going, sure, so.
Is anybody else from Dayton going?
I don't have the time. I took too much time for nail surgery stuff.
Okay, well, I'm already booked.
Excellent. Somebody will represent us. All right, does, uh, the city manager have any reports or anything?
I have nothing there at this time.
Good deal. We have both of the attorneys, so I will entertain a motion of adjournment. Yes, we are adjourned seven forty.